All right, it is six P M and we will go ahead and call the city council work session to order. We have one topic on our meeting tonight and that is a discussion of our tomorrow together comprehensive plan with Brian Scott.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The day has finally arrived. Those four years. So very briefly, I don't want to steal too much of Chris's thunder. We're required by state statutes to have a comprehensive land use plan. And our first land use plan was adopted in nineteen sixty-eight, fifty-five years ago. And we've adopted several since then. The most recent one was in two thousand and seven with like an update in two thousand and eleven. But it's it's time now to revisit that and update that plan again. So that was the process we started about four years ago. We literally started that on the eve of covid. If you remember, we had a joint work session with the planning commission and the chairs were spread out. We were kind of doing this thing and people were talking about the strange thing called a pandemic and so because of the pandemic, things kind of stopped for a little bit till we sort of regrouped to figure out what to do. Then we kind of started it up again that following summer in August. Put together a steering committee. Kind of kickoff meeting in October with the community, then has series of meetings with the steering committee throughout all of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Or twenty twenty and twenty-one. So we have several members of the steering committee with us tonight, including Josh Steady and Jacqueline Gleason, or Gamison, excuse me. And then a couple of members are plant or city consul, councilman Crane and at that time, customer floor and now mayor floor, we're on that steering committee as well as some members of our planning commission, Commissioner Robin Duclo and Stuart Braden. And there's some members of the community as well. So those folks put a lot of time and effort into the product that you see before you tonight. There's also been a lot of staff review of this and staff input. We presented this to the planning commission as a draft document in September. They had quite a bit of discussion about it that evening, and I think the minutes are including your packet. So we have with us tonight Chris Shires with Confluence. That was the consulting team that assisted us through this whole process. And Chris is going to go over the same presentation that he gave to the planning commission, a little to higher level, since a lot of the details already in your packet. We shared with you the draft document that has not changed since what we shared with the planning commission. So it's still the same draft document. And then based on the recommendations, the amendments that were proposed and what's finally agreed upon will produce a final draft document, all that information in there. So without any further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Chris and let him go through his presentation.
All right, Brian, thank you for that. So Christopher Shires, principal with Confluence, your consultant on this project, really excited to be in front of you. So Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. So I'm going to jump right into it. So for this presentation, it'll get there. I'll just talk for my notes. I do want to do a quick overview of the the project process and schedule. And then do that high level review of the outline of the plan document, just to make sure we're understanding the different major components. And then we do want to review with you the recommended changes from the planning commission. They did make a motion to recommend approval. They did have some certain changes. And then, of course, to go through any next steps and leave some time, knowing that you have your meeting next, that we can answer any questions for you. Making sure we're giving you all the information you need. And so on the next screens, I can go to the next one here. We did have this outlined as a four step process. And so, hey, we're finally in the home stretch here, the last step, that final adoption. So we started off with that kickoff. Research analysis, public engagement was in phase two, really coming up with the vision for the plan. And then that draft plan evaluation process here in phase three. So we're now finally in phase four, which is that true adoption. So on the next slide, just wanted to again recognize our hardworking steering committee. They met with us a lot. They gave us a lot of good feedback. They reviewed a lot of a lot of documents and so really appreciate their time. And then on the next slide, just want to just do that quick recap of kind of those major meetings, the major review process. And so there was nine separate advisory committee meetings. We did have four joint workshops with the commission and council. We had a series of stakeholder interviews. We had our interactive online engagement website, very crucial since so much of this was impacted by covid. We had our public workshop, public open house. And of course, we in the middle of this had that E T C conducted community survey statistically valid survey. So a very useful tool for us. So on the next slide, do want to just kind of acknowledge the website traffic. It did receive a lot of traffic. You can see the the total visits, the number of unique users, which is really that key number, seven hundred and seventy. That's a solid number. And then, you know, the number of people taking giving us feedback through the different engagement exercises and surveys through the website. It also communicated information on the process. So on the next slide, this just a recap, just saying that we did get some detailed mapping comments through that website where people give us their ideas, pinpointed areas of concern. Really some good feedback for our consultant team to then share back to the steering committee. On the next slide, I do want to jump through then the plan format. So we do need to kind of check in the box. This is an important document that supports our zoning activity, our zoning recommendations and decisions. So we we have eight major chapters with an introduction at the beginning, and of course, then the implementation summary document at the end or chapter at the end. And then the kind of lengthy and rather thick appendix that we tend not to print with this. That's all that existing analysis, existing conditions report, and of course, input memorializing the the summary of the public's input for us. And so on the next slide, kind of running through the different highlights. One of the first chapters is our strategic opportunities, taking a really fresh, high level and drilled down look at the community and where we see our potential opportunities, key features. So we're looking at gateways, your major arterial roadways, the extension of Knoll Avenue, bike lane improvements, the acknowledgement of Johnson Drive, another key features and starting to really think about future land uses. So on the next slide, one of the most important chapters, and we've spent a lot of time on that, is your future land use plan, because it helps you make decisions on approving or denying rezoning requests or addressing new development proposals. And so you have your existing land use map on the left side of the screen. That's what's there today and all those colors mean something. So in general, yellow is single family detached residential or single family residential, low density residential. Red is some kind of commercial and then all the different colors in between. So that's how it sits today. But then we have our future land use map and it's the what could be in the future. Now that is not the zoning map. The zoning map is something different. That's your legal document to say this is what what are the rules in place? Where areas for single family? Where are areas for multifamily? What are areas for commercial or mixed use development? The land use plan is that guide for the future. And so we may have certain properties there that have a different land use designation than what they are today. And you know what? That's just fine. That's what we do typically as a city. When we're doing long range planning, it only comes into play when somebody's in before you're saying, hey, I want to change my property and I want to build something new. We look at the future land use plan as well as the policy recommendations to help you make decisions on, hey, is that a good idea? All right, on the next slide, I want to hit on some of the other, all the other chapters, but I'm just going to go through kind of the major themes because they help reinforce each other as well as a future land use plan. So natural features and environment, so all things about flood abatement, stormwater management. A lot of efforts related to the KC Climate Action Plan and your own considerations, open space, tree canopy and sustainable development. On the next chapter, all about parks and recreation, preserving open space, parks and recreation enhancements and maintenance, ADA compliance with our facilities as well as the concept of universal design. And think of that as kind of the next level of ADA compliance. On the next chapter here, transportation and mobility, mobility, the fancy word of all those different ways we get around, not just by car. Pedestrian safety, multimodal transportation, safety and efficiency and access criteria. Mobility plans, Smart Move three point O, that regional planning effort as well as street access and improvements. And a lot of work went into this chapter, really thinking about pedestrian, bike, car, transit, all the different ways we get around. On chapter seven, economic revitalization. Big lift on Johnson Drive, one of the very important corridors of the community that push and desire for mixed use, land uses and development, sustainable and diverse, building that sustainable yet diverse economy. Positive redevelopment, a big theme on this. We only sometimes can get it right once. We only have so many opportunities on the on the site. Our gateways, building facades, and of course broadband internet. Number eight, all about housing, housing affordability, that missing middle, and sometimes we'll call that the gentle density. It's that in between housing size. It's it's a single family attached, multi-level apartment. Some of those lower densities, transitional land uses between differing land uses, code enforcement, and then the ever popular ADUs accessory dwelling units. Number nine, infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. This is a little more of a kind of a nuts and bolts, meat and potato kind of chapter where we're looking at your budgeting, coordination of those improvements and future amenities. And then finally, the implementa- implementation chapter. And so this is that one stop chapter. So if you had the two chapters to really look at, it's land use and implementation. And so here we're taking all those recommendations, policy considerations as well as action items and putting them in one big long list and adding some priority to them. And so on the next slide, just want to show that. So we start with the major goals by chapter. And then there was strategic action items to help make those goals happen. And in this table, we also put a priority. Is it a low priority, a medium priority or a high priority? And then a timeframe is it? And even if it's just something that'll be ongoing, is it a short timeframe, something in the, you know, one to three year or something beyond that? Okay, I know that was a lot to go through, but I just wanted to kind of hit that all from a high level. So on the proposed changes at our September twenty-fifth, the planning commission meeting, your planning commissioners spent a lot of time going through this, asked great questions. And so what they really came up with first, some future land use map changes. And I want to run through those with you. So on the next slide, here's that future land use plan as we presented to the planning commission and with three areas for change. And and we might as well just jump to the next slide here where I can zoom in. So the first one, kind of on the west side of the community up by, and this is where I have to get my map out so I can read everything. One second here. So on the left side of the map of the screen, that's what we presented to the planning commission. And then on the right side is their requested change. And so in particular, out by Barclay, just by West fifty-seventh. There's an area where they wanted the single, the single family residential kind of cut off as well as a, I'm sorry, not the single. It's a little bit of both, but wanted the mixed use in purple, cut off a little bit with a buffer of in that orange, medium density residential. So kind of thinking that that goal of we want to transition between to similar land uses. So we can kind of stair step from mixed use, medium density to low density residential. On the next one, so here along Johnson Drive, spent a little bit of time on this one as well, kind of debating kind of the different options. And one of the things I probably said at one of our very early on meetings, there's a lot of ways to color up a future land use map that are correct. It really comes down to what you think is right today and over time it may change. And so with this, another one is again, think of that mindset of transition. So along Johnson Drive on the north side, we have again a mixed use downtown mixed use land use category in the light purple with the single family and it's frankly existing single family immediately to the north along kind of on either side of rigs. Can that instead be medium density residential? And that was a recommendation voted on. And then lastly, was really a cleanup item that somebody really did a great job of catching. I don't know why we had that parcel in the middle shown as green as a park site. That's wrong. It's a single family area. And so we just, that's a real logical one, and I'm glad they caught that mistake. All right, there was two text changes also proposed. And so in your future land use map, we define what all those land use categories are. And so we have a mixed use, medium density land use, just land use designation, which is different than zoning. So again, a land use designation is kind of higher level. And then later, if somebody has a development proposal, you look at the land use map, those land use designations, and then make a decision what would be an appropriate zoning district. Or if we're doing a plan development, what would be the appropriate zoning requirements? So in this case, there was a request to change the mixed use medium density definition to instead of changing that number of dwelling units per acre typical from twelve to forty-five is actually to put in an upper limit, no more than twenty-four dwelling units per acre and also set a kind of a building height limit of no more than three story for residential development. So in other words, saying no to say a four or five story apartment building. And I I know Brian has provided you some much more detailed information of what different projects in and around here, what they look like from a density standpoint. And so just to kind of help weigh any decision making on that and as long along with a staff recommendation. So on the next slide, there was another requested change, kind of in our implementation, action items. This was under the transportation chapter. And this is related to one of our strategies implementing a flexible, complete street ordinance. And so we have there, you know, consider referring to the NACTO's blueprint for autonomous urbanization. And the thought is, and why not add their urban street design guide? Which has some great recommendations for us on how we can truly have streets that work for all. Definitely a good addition. And so that was another recommendation. So those were the kind of the three map changes and the two text changes recommended by the commission in their vote to forward this on to you for your consideration. And so with that, just real quick on the next step. So obviously, we have the meeting here today. Assuming everything goes smoothly, we would then have the kind of official public meeting on this for your consideration on the December twentieth council meeting. And I'm happy to answer questions or let Brian kind of go into greater detail.
Yeah, I don't know, Brian, if maybe before we launch into questions, if you want to speak to the staff recommendations on each item.
I was going to do that, Mayor. Thank you. So as Chris was saying, the planning commission had a good discussion about the con plan that was presented to them and made several suggested changes, all of which staff is supportive of with really the exception of one. And that's kind of upon further reflection, a few days after the meeting was over, sort of reexamining the definition of mixed use density as proposed in the plan and the definition that was amended by the planning commission. Staff cannot really support that amendment. And I'll tell you why. A lot of the mixed used medium density land uses. Looking at the future land use plan, a lot of those are along Johnson Drive and kind of the core of the downtown area. So that would be that kind of section between roughly Knoll and Johnson Drive, Martway, Knoll, to almost all the way to Roland Drive. So and that's the area that we've really been focusing on trying to redevelop. And I've I've preached for a long time that to activate Johnson Drive to create that kind of vibrant, economically sustainable destination place that we all want to see for Johnson Drive. We need to have people living in our downtown. And studies show that we really need to have two to four thousand housing units within about a quarter of a mile of Johnson Drive. And that downtown area I just defined is about a quarter of a mile. So fifty-seventh Street in the north, Shawnee Mission Parkway in the south, Knoll to the west, Roland Drive to the east. All of that kind of adds up to about a half mile both directions. And you kind of walk into the center of that, you're a quarter of a mile, which is about a five minute walk for somebody. And that's really defines what a walkable downtown is. And so that's what people are looking for. And that's the developers that we've talked with, you know, that's what attracts them to building emissions, the fact that we are a walkable community. The residents are looking for that ability just to be able to leave their apartment or leave their home and be able to walk down the street to Johnson Drive to dine or to shop or whatever the case may be. Just leave the car where it's parked. And of course, that's the thing that I always hear when talking with people about the communities, the walkability of of mission, especially the downtown area. But all of that is driven by frankly, density. And frankly, I had a little bit of heartburn with the original proposal of twelve to forty-five dwelling units per acre. I thought that was a little bit low because a lot of the projects that we're seeing today are fifty or more. I showed that in the the memo I provided to you. Local Mission Bowl, fifty-eight Knoll. All of those are fifty, sixty or more units per acre. I think the planning commission, I understand their position. They're thinking about some of those smaller, older apartment buildings that we have kind of in and around the downtown area. The at-home apartments that we have along Martway here. Some of the older apartment buildings that we have along fifty eighth street and even up outlook a little bit further north. And those feel very comfortable and they feel like they kind of fit in with the neighborhood and but even those are above twenty-four units per acre. So we're we're kind of going in the opposite direction if we were to take the amendment of maximum of twenty-four dwelling units per acre or three stories. So that that's kind of the reason why staff took the position that we can't support that one amendment. But the other amendments that Chris spoke to, the planning commission made, we can certainly support those. We think those were smart decisions to make. So I don't want to spend too much time dwelling on that because I know you'll have questions. I think there's folks in the audience who probably like to make some comments as well. So I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Brian, I did just want to make one comment about those sort of existing garden level apartments in that area. It looks like those range from more thirty-one to forty-three units per acre, more in that range. So consistent with the originally proposed definition in the con plan. Great, thank you. Any questions for Chris or Brian? Yeah, Hillary?
Thanks, Mayor. I I just wanted to make sure I fully understood, Brian. When I look at page thirteen, the future land use plan, not the existing, but the future, I see mixed use downtown in that light purple. And then when I look at pay, and I just again want to make sure I'm comparing apples and apples. When I look at page twenty-four, I see that mixed use medium density. Is that pulled out because of the planning commission recommendations or what am I missing on that?
That'd be my mistake because I see that that's just a cut and paste from it's an old map label. We changed the the just the title of that. We thought not, don't call it mixed use downtown. Let's be more authentic on the type of mixed use we're calling it. So it is mixed use medium density.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. For for me, maybe ahead of the next committee meeting, when we talk about this next, I would love if possible for us to have the new definitions and then what feeds into the new definition. So we can understand when we're looking at the existing to the new, how they're broken up, especially when we think about some of the language changes over on the west side as well. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, Brian, I was glad to hear your comments about that particular recommendation about the mixed use medium density. That's the first thing I locked on to looking at this. The planning commission recommendations. You know, just reviewing some some examples out there of like visual guides to density and and examples of these different density levels, which I found really helpful. If you want to take a Google sometime and just see what these different densities look like. It's it helps me understand what we're talking about, but I think twenty-four is absolutely far too low for mixed use medium density. And I I agree with you. I think with mixed use and and some of the residential zoning numbers, I think our upper limits are a bit too low across the board. And I don't think they need major tweaks, but that that was my takeaway. But the yeah, that one concerned me and I don't think I could support that one either.
Any other questions or comments for Chris or Brian? Yeah, Debbie?
Thank you, Chris. I enjoyed being on that committee. I think it was great. Let me just reflect on page twenty-four in my parochial voice that I'm going to bring to the table. The only thing that changes is my house is gone. So, um, you know, this is way in the future, I'm supposing.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Brian. Maybe you could speak to how that works or Chris, just more broadly in terms of no one's coming to take anyone's houses, but.
Sure, yeah, I'll just jump in.
Okay. Yeah, and this is a really great point to bring up, and it is something that that people do sometimes raise a little bit of concern. Because again, we're thinking future, future oriented. So how do we use that future land use map? So just because we color up over somebody's house and let's say it's a single family house today and but we have, say, a medium density or a higher density or even a commercial designation. It doesn't mean the city is ever coming in and we're just going to rezon you. And we're going to tell you, you have to develop or we're going to buy your property. That's not how we do business as a city, of course, or any, most cities don't. It's in reaction to somebody making a development proposal. So a developer or a group of property owners have assembled their land and hey, we're ready to redevelop. We want to do this. We look at that future land use map and say, well, you know, this is what you could do. It's really a good communication tool to developers, future property owners, current owners of what could be in the future. So we all can collectively make some good decisions. So again, the way development works, it's still a voluntary process. You have to have a willing seller, a willing buyer, a willing developer, and you still have to go through a public hearing process and a rezoning and all the little developmental requirements and rules in there. In fact, one thing that I think will be a logical out coming of this is some updates to your zoning regulations, your development code to even maybe set kind of a minimum number or grouping of lots that would be ripe and ready for redevelopment. So somebody doesn't just take one lot, one single family house in the middle of a group of single family houses, and I'm going to do something right here. It'd be really logical to say, no, we have to see redevelopment at a block level. You have to assemble all the properties, not just kind of, you know, from the movie Up, have one right in the middle. Other communities do the same thing. So does that clear as mud, I hope?
I think so. And again, could you maybe refresh us on the timeline of how long this visioning plan is supposed to be for?
Right, another great, a great point. So in fact, this was even commented to me earlier. We we try to look out as far into the future as we possibly can. And so a typical comprehensive planning, we're looking out twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years in the future to try to guess to think what it what it can happen. So really, a comprehensive plan is a very, very long range document. Now, what is very typical is we talk about its shelf life. Typically, it has a ten, twelve, fifteen year, depending, you know, ten year shelf life. Or you're really back kind of doing an update or refresh, pulling new data to see if some of our predictions actually happened. Because we have things that just changed the world on us. Covid changed both the retail and the office market dramatically. And so we've all had to react to that.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah, Trent?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just kind of on the theme of what Ben was saying earlier, if it's possible for the next go around of this packet, I would enjoy a visual of these definitions that we're talking about as it pertains to mission or at the bare minimum, just an example of current structures. And I know we have the map where you can see them, but it would be helpful to pair, you know, for someone coming in cold when they say, oh, I see a definition for business park slash light industrial, you know, what does that mean in mission terms? You know, what's a picture of that?
Examples from around mission.
Yeah, if that's possible, I think that would be helpful to help people visualize.
I think back to a councilman Krings question about this one proposed amendment of extending that medium density residential across the north side of Johnson Drive, west of Lamar. There was extensive discussion at the planning commission about that. And the there was extensive discussion, you'll recall back in the spring, we had the joint work sessions with the city council and the planning commission about creating kind of buffers around those areas that are mixed use or more a higher commercial type density development, which is what we have along Johnson Drive in the north side right now. That that right now is under the form based code. And so it's always been kind of intended those businesses or commercial uses along the north side of John. Those businesses or commercial uses along the north side of Johnson Drive would be. Sort of a higher density use. Now those are small lots. So it's difficult to develop those lots to a higher density than what they are right now. But the idea was to have some protection to the neighbors to the north. And so to incorporate some kind of medium density residential use to the north of Johnson Drive. And, um. Again, the kind of question came up, do we, do we leave it as proposed, or we just have kind of wrapped around that one or two parcels of property right through the corner, Lamar and Johnson Drive? Or do we go ahead and extend it all the way across? Johnson Drive to basically Walmer. Or, um. I think that might even be like Barclay right there. So. Eventually the decision was to make an amendment. To propose extending it all the way across, but that was the reasoning behind that. And it's like Chris was saying, this is just a proposed land use. It's not zoning. That's sort of the next step. Once we adopt this plan. We'll start visiting our zoning code and taking these concepts and turning into something that's tangible. Uh, but that would be, you know, years or so down the road before we had anything like that was tangible.
Yeah, Ken?
Going back to the. Proposed change from the planning commission. On the density, uh, can you comment, Brian, a little bit about what the impact would be? For instance, this whole notion of. Uh, developers coming to us and re- requesting abatements. Uh, because they can't make some project work on the basis of the cost. And what they think they're going to.
Yeah.
Uh, get, uh, from, from their development. Can you talk about the impact is. Comparing those two, uh, the proposed, uh, from the planning commission. Versus the, uh, higher density.
So the. The higher density that is in the draft plan that was submitted to the planning commission to you all. Is twelve to forty-five dwelling units per acre for residential. And like I said, that's even on the low side, given some of the projects that we're seeing today. So if, if that definition were to turn into zoning. We'd still be giving, you know, called variances or deviations from the zoning code. For the number of units per acre. So moving over to. The lesser number that's proposed by the planning commission, that would be even greater. Request for deviation, you know, I think. We may have a creative developer that can develop something that's twenty-four or less, but I think that'll be, um, be far and few between.
And similarly on the baitments, the lower the units, the more likely they would be to need some sort of assistance to make the numbers pencil, right?
That, yeah, again, you know, it's. For developer live, it's about making the numbers work. And so. Kind of the. The common thing is to build something that's on a podium structure and there can be. Retail or office at that first level underneath the podium or parking is more often what. Is occurring because of the small size of the lots that are being purchased and the need for parking. So then we start looking at the number of residential units above that podium. Above the first level. And really the kind of the magic number is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred units. And that's really kind of what makes their numbers work. So that, that allows them to build a quality product. And then be able to lease those units at the market rate. And there's kind of a defined market rate in the Kansas City area. And then to be able to return a modest return on our investment. And. You know, I think we heard from Mr. Kimmel a few weeks ago, it used to be fifteen percent was a modest return. Now it's less than ten percent kind of in today's economy. So, so you reduce the number of, of units, obviously the request or the desire for. Some kind of incentive from the city is going to go up just to make those numbers work, to kind of make it equal out. So.
Yeah, Ken?
So I guess a follow-up is. Are you suggesting that even the proposed, uh, future land use? Is too low in terms of that? That aspect? And are we going to end up with more variances as a result of? Of what we are adopting as in this proposal?
I for one feel it's too low, but that is kind of what the steering committee landed on. You know, there was discussion at steering committee level as well about these definitions. And that was what the steering committee kind of landed on. So I think that's. It's kind of, you know, in between, if you will, um. And I think, you know, when we rewrite the zoning code. We can come up with creative ways on our zoning code. Maybe to address. Some of the issues that the planning commission had about the massing and density of buildings, which is, we kind of drove and make that amendment. And at the same time, try to be able to meet the needs of the development community as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to twelve to forty-four dwelling units. I think I could probably live without a staff, but.
Well, it seems to me that many of the discussions that we've had of existing proposals. Have been around the massive. Buildings adjacent to residential. And I don't know if there's some way in the zoning. Process that we can address that in a way that breaks it down into two. Different levels, so that it's a graduated.
You can certainly do that. You can more clearly define as we were doing with those properties north of Johnson Drive, kind of in a intermediary, kind of mixed. Or medium residential use of some kind. Um, we can define. And our zoning code setbacks. And I think in particular Johnson Drive, which is always kind of the concern, there was sort of a mixed reaction in the community about the locale. You know, some people love it. Other people think it's too big and kind of. This hulking building sitting there in Johnson Drive. Um, with the zoning code, you could require setbacks to the facade of the building. So the first two or three stories. Could be closer to the sidewalk and then above that. Could be set back a little bit. So it gives a little bit more of a human element walking down Johnson Drive and. It's not this kind of canyon effect, if you will. With tall buildings, but you know, a lot of people fear is going to happen. Um, so yeah, I think there are kind of tools that we can incorporate into our zoning. To help address some of those issues.
Brian or Chris, I had a question about, um. The unit gap and sorry, I didn't catch this until I was doing the last review, but, um, the unit gap between. The proposed, um, before the amendment, the proposed definition of mixed use medium density of twelve to forty-five units per acre. And then the mixed use high density is starting at fifty. How would sort of projects of forty-five to fifty fit in? Or does it make sense to adjust the medium category to forty-nine? So there isn't that gap?
So, uh, great, great question because we, we kind of went back and forth on, on these densities.
Yeah.
The one thing to kind of consider is these are kind of. Fuzzy ranges and then you, you kind of set them in stone with the zoning.
With the zoning, okay.
Yeah, so.
Great.
You know, we sure could, you know, make those perfectly line up. Sometimes we'll have them overlap. It's just to talk about in general.
Okay.
Fifty plus, uh, under forty-five, but you know, more than twelve, you know, just kind of the, kind of that thinking that range.
Okay.
Yeah, a great, great catch on that.
Any other questions? Yeah, Ben?
So I just had a few comments from the, from sort of the. What do we call it? The summary of goals section, which I think. Is probably if people are going to go for a, you know, a quick one page read of what we're thinking about with this comp plan. Um, that's a good, a good place to jump in. Um, three things that stuck out to me were the transportation and mobility. I, I read, read through that again, and, um, I still came away feeling like I'd prefer some more. Explicit language, uh, that emphasizes like an increase to our bike and pedestrian infrastructure and some. Some desire to, to help, you know, eliminate some of those unnecessary or short, um. You know, automotive trips. Uh, it just, it didn't quite feel like we were making, um, you know, walking and cycling and transit like a. A first class option in, in our vision for the future, trying to look at as far as we can. Um, I've already kind of mentioned on housing, I think we, we just a little low on, um, the upper limits to density. I think the lower limits are fine. They reflect exactly what we see and what we. Would want to continue to allow in most of the, the different, um, usages, but. I think in the residential zones, all three of them and the mixed use zones, the upper limits are just a bit low. Um, we've really. Talked the whole time about that, so I'll get off of that. And then, and under infrastructure, uh, maintenance and enhancement. I would like to see. That tie into some, some, um. Some climate action commitments. I think it's. We have this really strong language of focus on primary infrastructure issues and we sort of define what those are, but to me that kind of implicitly. Deprioritizes things that are not on that list. And I'm just hoping that, um. Climate action can be an important part of that infrastructure piece. Those are the three things that came away from me, just as thematic, uh, things I'd like to see improved.
Yeah, and I just had one comment from being on the steering committee to the, to your last point. We did go back and forth and sort of. How repetitive do we want to be? You know, so if we set it in one place, do we want to say it in every place? So I think, you know, when we had those discussions and kind of like. We've had the discussions of on council, you know, thinking about the sustainability piece is something that's going to. Inform all those other pieces rather than, you know, repeating it in every single chapter. But I understand your point that that. Priority could get lost a little bit if it's not kind of on the page, but. We did go back and forth on that a bit.
I think that's certainly fair and I can see where that would, it'd be tough to, to want to iron that language out. Um. It did just feel like, sort of like, we're going to, we're going to prioritize streets and stormwater and, you know, if that's all, if, if we follow that rigidly, we'll never do anything else because we'll never catch up.
Yeah, Ken?
Sally, can you, you talk a little bit about process from here? Based on the discussion that we have. Is this going to be something that's on committee next?
Yeah, Laura, you want to take that one?
To that before, and before I jump into kind of those next steps. Um, I did want to say, you know, because this typically we would have completed this comprehensive plan update in what the twelve, maybe eighteen month timeframe. Um, which we know that that was a challenge for us. So I think there've been a lot of points. I've heard people kind of bump up against some frustration just because of the passage of time. And if you think about like emphasis on some of the things coming out of the climate action plan that have changed since we started this process in twenty twenty. And trying to, you know. Get a document that's still reflective of where we started in this process and where we are today. We have, we've had a lot of conversations about that implementation chapter and chapter ten. And really thinking, you know, from, from my perspective. This plan is adopted. And then our attention turns to that implementation plan. And that's where we spend our work on an ongoing basis. Pulling those threads out of the comprehensive plan and turning those into specific action priorities in any fiscal year, um, or process. So I think we could, we could go for another four years, you know, it's kind of massaging the language in the comp plan document, or we can say we're, we. Generally, we got it right. These are some areas where we want to really focus attention going forward. As far as process, uh, typically, um, we wanted to have this opportunity this evening and, uh, in a work session. Kind of present the, the discussion because there was a lot of discussion, the planning, those of you who had the opportunity to get through the planning commission minutes that were in your packet. Um, but it, it would be scheduled as an action item on your community development committee agenda on the thirteenth of December. Uh, for then council consideration, uh, at the December twentieth legislative meeting.
And I would say, you know, I, I agree with Laura that at some point we do have to put it to bed and it might not be every, um. You know, have every single last thing we want, but that also, um, the planning commission is supposed to revisit this document every year and that also we would plan to be, I think. More intentional or it may be bringing it to the forefront in our budget discussions as well, um, as a touch point on that implementation. Chapter in particular. Um, Laura, I, I know there has been some discussion tonight. If, for example, someone did have a proposed change, would it be preferable that they discuss that? With staff ahead of time so that there's an understanding as opposed to like amendments on the fly at our December meetings? Okay. Great. Yeah, Ken? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Debbie?
I just want to echo what Trent said. I would like a more schematic with the medium and the, the small density and the different things to find in an example of what they look like. Especially if we're going to roll this out to the public so they can see. What the future might look like. It would be real helpful to know what those, those particular density. Facilities look like, I think. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Chris and Brian. And with that, that's the only topic on our work session tonight. So we will conclude our work session. See you all seven for our council meeting.